We'll call the order, the regular meeting for the Oneyot City School District Board of Education, April fourteenth, twenty twenty one. We'll start with the legislative agents.
The United States of America and to the Republic where we stand is one nation under God, indivisible, and that is the law.
Have the roll call seats.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
This is Burnsburg.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Geesburg.
Here.
This is Kerkowski's accent. Mr. Becker.
Here.
This is Cashman.
Here.
Thank you.
Resolve to accept the agenda as mentioned.
Go.
Second. All in favor? Post. Resolve to accept the minutes of the March twenty fourth, twenty twenty as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Post. This brings us to our first opportunity to address the board for those of you attending via Zoom. If you type in the Q and A down at the bottom, any comments, we will read them. And I don't see any now, but there is another opportunity, so if you have something still free, we will read them at that time. Resolve that the reading of the Teaching and Administrative Personnel Memorandum twenty twenty one dash seven be waived and that the action items dated March, April fourteenth, twenty twenty one be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. So move. Discussion.
Mr. Graff, members of the board, tonight we have the, we have four folks on our Certified Personnel Memorandum who have earned tenure. We have Dina Bonson, Megan Connolly, Susan Johnson, and Renee Fairbrough. They do a wonderful job in our district and just want to congratulate them on this career milestone.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Post. Sentences. Resolve that the reading of the Non-Certificated Personnel Memorandum twenty twenty one dash seventy waived and that the action items dated April seventh, April fourteenth, twenty twenty one be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Any discussion?
Yes, if I may, on our non-certified personnel memorandum, we will note that Mr. Matt Crosby is our new custodian at Valley View. And Mr. Luke Holtman is our new custodial worker who's going to be at Valley View. So we welcome Luke. Matt has been with us for a while now and he does a wonderful job and has already positively impacted Valley View campus. So congratulations to Mr. Crosby and to Mr. Holtman. And if I just may say, on our certified memorandum, we also had two new substitute teachers and certainly want to thank them for their interest and their service to our district because we are, we certainly appreciate our substitute teachers. So thank you.
No mention of our new school monitor?
No, not at all.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Post. Sentences. For testimony superintendent's report, capital project update.
All right, thank you very much. Lisa and I had a meeting with our architectural and project management firm today. We're certainly hoping to get the project wrapped up by the end of June. So we have a little work to do, but more to come on that. There's a little more thinking and research that we need to do relative to a couple of outstanding projects, but we are certainly moving closer to being done with that, which I'll be very excited. So we'll move on. Appreciate that. And if I, if I could just add, you know, tonight I will be voting on the teachers' contracts and the contract for our public's undergrads folks. And very happy to report that that was very progressive and seamless negotiation and they're very, very respectful for everything that those folks do in our district. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor? All right. Actually, we'll do approve that. Hold on here. So let's do this. Let's resolve to approve as recommended by the superintendent. A tentative agreement between the Oneyot City School District and the CSEA Local One Thousand Act be as presented. So move. Discussion. Any additional discussion?
Nothing additional. Okay. Well, thank you.
All in favor? All right. Post. Sentences. Thank you. Resolve to approve as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, the memorandum of agreement and the memorandums of understanding between the Oneyot City School District and the Oneyot Teachers Association.
Convo.
Discussion. All in favor? All right. Post. Sentences. Shorter business under the business manager's report is to approve the budget and that is resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget totaling forty-two million, one hundred twelve thousand, one hundred ninety-eight be adopted by the Oneyot City School District Board of Education. Discussion.
Hey, I'll just go through this quick PowerPoint.
And then I have to share the screen with the.
Oh, it was.
Well, I know I have to share the screen with just that, so just one second, please.
Okay. So it will look very similar to what you saw the last time, but we did finalize the proposed budget number. So we'll go through those changes and then the board can vote on that. So we still have the Ahold date at the foothills. We can change it. And so the only thing that changed on here is the budget amount and we are proposing forty-two million, one hundred twelve, one ninety-eight. And then the proposition is of course for the purchase of two buses and another one for the election of two board members. So, next. So our goals are really the same. You know, we're trying to answer to all of our stakeholders, which include our students, our staff, our taxpayers, and our community. So we're looking to expand educational opportunities and we're always looking to improve there. We have to be mindful of the current state of the finances and the economy. We have to make sure that we cover that plan and sustain it. We have to deal with our unfunded mandates, which seem to keep coming at us more and more every year while we still provide a good educational program. And we're looking to add some student support, which are needed anyway, but you know, they're especially needed now with the pandemic. And maintain our facilities and equipment, which were somewhat neglected in the current year budget. So we're trying to get that back in as well. Next. So the last time we met, we were about one point two million short from balancing this budget. So how did we get there in that time period? We've been putting in the real time costs, you know, so there are some minor adjustments that are made along the way as we know things. We did get some additional state foundation aid and that, it looks bigger than it really is because it covered that chunk from last year that the federal government gave us. So it covered that and we got some additional foundation aid. And we'll see that in a slide coming up. We did put some federal funding in there. We don't know a lot about that federal funding right now. There are federal funding streams. I listened to two webinars and most of the response to the questions that people are asking are, we don't know yet. We don't know yet. So that's, I mean, that's normal, I guess, for this and it was not in, you know, a hurry. So we know that it will have to be accounted for in a separate fund. So we may need to extract some of the things from our budget and just show them separately because we'll have to apply for a grant fund. So we'll take those expenses that are allowable to spend this on and then shift them to the grants so that we can use that for that. One of the things, I mean, we still have to be careful and be responsible with our budget. We're hoping if we have some savings in other areas that we can use that in the future years because the federal funding will eventually, you know, they'll be a clip. It won't be there anymore. So we need to make sure that we're still looking at days we can save money so that we can fill this when that, when that gap is gone. And we're also, we propose another health insurance option for Medicaid eligible retirees. And we anticipate some fairly significant savings there. And it is, of course, it's going to depend on, you know, if people sign up for that plan. We've had two Zooms. One is recorded on the website. There's lots of information on the website. And we also had an in-person meeting and I think that it was very well received. So I think we'll have some, some more savings than, than we put right now. But right now we're being conservative with that savings because we don't know who else fits over. Next. So here is a slide and I don't know if you can see it from where you are, but this is on the website, by the way, so anybody can pull it up and look at it now or later. But this kind of shows you how we're planning to pay for those expenditures. So our property taxes, we're going with our tax cap of, it was just under three point, or point three nine percent. So not even a half a percent. So that, that's about eighty-five thousand dollars. And we have some changes in the percentages of the pilots that they're paying. We did have an incarcerated youth contract with other districts, which they don't need anymore. So we won't have that revenue coming in. And then the other revenues, that's mainly OSCE refunds, things like that. We are expecting a decrease in interest. State aid, the foundation aid increase is reflected there. And then, you know, we didn't have that pandemic adjustment of last year, so they filled that in too. And then the federal aid, you can see last year, that was the pandemic adjustment that they filled in the federal aid. And actually, it's the same kind of thing, but last year they told us we have to account for it general. And this time they're saying, when it comes out, when it's available, you'll have to account for it federal. So there's, there's a little bit of an increase there. So that's what I was talking about. We, we still have to really watch our spending and, right, those. And then the fund balance, I would say, is the same as it was before. And just without reminder that that is not a revenue. That's, it's sort of like a saving rate. Next. So this shows the changes in the budget is up one point one six nine million. And that is a two point eight six percent increase to get to our forty-two, one twelve, one ninety-eight. Next. And just a little bit more about the proposition, two buses, to replace buses that are in excess of ten years old. We will bond those and so they're part of our debt service. And we bond those over five years and our aid for the buses will come in over five years. We estimate we'll get about sixty-five percent back on that expenditure. And also just to note, our transportation aid ratio did increase slightly at the moment percentage point. So that will help also. The reason I say sixty-five is because they take out, you know, there are various things that they don't accrue for aid and it breaks it down a little bit. So that's why you don't get that straight rate percentage. Next. So just to highlight some of the general support, the, the increase there is a hundred fifty-nine thousand. And what that does is it maintains our current positions. We have the purchase of a truck in there where we were hoping that, we did have a grant approved and then they said, well, the grant's approved, but we're not funding it. So that was helpful. So we're still actually hoping that that grant eventually comes through with the money now, but we do need a truck. So we have a plan on that. We have to keep working down now. And that's the OSCE administration and capital cost, which is a pretty significant part of our general support budget. And a little bit of increased cost for some of our outside service contractors, those more preventative maintenance. We have, you know, waste removal, things like that. So they go up a little bit. Hey, next. And then some highlights of the obstruction that increase is nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So that's our largest increase, which makes sense because that's the largest part of our budget. That replaces all the positions that are being vacated for retirement. It does add an additional special education teacher. And you may recall, in this current budget, we took out really a lot of, most of the equipment purchases and things like that. We brought everything down to be our minimum. So this brings back some of the instructional equipment that we, that we need. This also includes our OSCE occupational education program. That is a pretty significant portion of our budget. They're great programs, but they go through a three-year average of the students that we sent there and that's how they determine our cost. We do have summer school in here and so that's an enhancement. And technology, we took out a pretty significant chunk last, in the current year that we're in. So as we've seen this year, we've used a lot of technology. We need to get that back in. Next. So transportation, we've already talked about transportation. This goes through. We do contract for transportation now, obviously. And this is a required disclosure that we are in year two of a five-year contract with our school services. We don't actually know what that increase will be that's determined. June fifteenth is usually when the Transportation CPI comes up. So it's three percent for the Transportation CPI, which is our first class. So we just estimate on that. Next. And then some other things that we have in our budget. We transfer a small amount to the school food service fund. That generally doesn't pay for itself. And then we have the inter-fund transfers to the federal fund and that's for the summer special education program. So some of our students have a twelve-month program, not a ten-month program, and we're responsible for twenty percent of those talks of the approved costs. So that's what that is. So we have a hundred thousand dollars going in for the summer program for our portion of that. Next. This just goes through the benefits and the percentages that we pay on salaries. Benefits are a pretty significant portion of our budget. The increase here is four hundred seventeen thousand. It would be a little more, but if you go down a few bullets, we did talk about, a little bit about the health insurance. So I took out a little bit over two hundred thousand dollars in anticipation of some of our Medicare eligible retirees changing over to that Medicare plan. We did have a, in our current, in our current active plan, a six point five percent increase. So normally, you know, we'd see an increase there, but I did reduce it in anticipation of that. And we also were notified that we have a fund balance with our health insurance plan. And so they'll be returning about a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars of that to us. So I took that out of the health insurance line. And the other benefits are explained there. They're about eleven and a half million dollars. Next. So debt service, this is our building project and bus bonds, things like that. So it's our principal and interest. And this is offset by our building aid. So when you see building aid and, and the capital portion of our transportation aid, they help us fund the debt service. And that's pretty, it's almost the same. It's only twenty-two thousand decrease. So there's not a big difference there, which is what we want so that we don't have a big, you know, increase or lack in our budget with our projects. So that's, that's how we like to keep it. So it's pretty stagnant there. Next. And then this slide just shows changes from the current year where those changes happened. And you can see most of the change was in salaries and that makes sense because that's most of our budget. And then we have the equipment and technology, which we touched on before. And the other ones are fairly small changes, but that's how we got to the one point one six nine increase. Next. And so this one is just a visual. Sometimes people like visuals. So this just shows the percentage that we're spending on program administrative and capital. Next. And our last slide just tells you that our salaries and benefits are about seventy percent of our budget proposal. And also there, there is additional information on our website tomorrow. Though, well, this presentation is not, but presentation of part before, our property tax cap calculation. And then also you'll see for, if you want to look at more detail, there's a fifty-slide PowerPoint for our expenditures and that compares the current year we're in and the budget we're proposing as well as a five-year history for every account approved. So there's also one for revenues. I think that was one of this slide. But so if anybody really is interested in looking at the details of each account grouping, then please go on our website and look at that and feel free to ask any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Lisa. Great presentation. It would be better if you'd job on the budget. Thank you. All in favor? Post. Sentences. Resolve that the reading of the Financial Memorandum twenty twenty one dash six and the addendum be waived and that the financial action items dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty one be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. So move.
I feel like that's not enough. The, it's basic standard things out there. I remember item three, the Madison, Almada, OSCE service agreement. That's just our firm commitment. We usually do that through our OSCEs, but this OSCE wants their own agreement there and that's for the family ID program that we use. Brown and Crown Empire State Broker of Record, they are the ones who were selected by our health insurance consortium to research the different plan options, the Medicare plan options. And so after they did that and they offered it out to the districts now, the districts that wanted to participate will name Brown and Crown as the broker of record who was selected by our health insurance consortium so that we can go forward with that option. So that'll represent us now. And, and then the, the Bruins High Yoga, which is our consortium Medicare Advantage program, allows us to participate in that, in that fan option, so offering that. And then we just have the preventative annual contract, which may change throughout the year, but there's a clause where we can, we can change that contract or cancel it because we, whatever happens to here, our automation systems might change our needs with that. But we do want to get it in place now because we still need it. And then can I just quickly go through the property tax report for that? So that is due April twenty-sixth and that's a required court approval. So that just goes through the information, the number portion that we just talked about in our budget. And it also lists out our reserves and, you know, our projections there, our fund balance projections. This has to be submitted to S E P by, given six or twenty-four hours after the board's budget. So we don't have to, that's nice, but I can submit it to S E P tomorrow. And our reserves, this is a summary, but we do a very detailed reserve analysis that, that's posted on our website. Every April, so this is by.
Questions? All in favor? Post. Sentences. This brings us to our second opportunity to press the board. Do we have any comments? Move on to round table. Sir, you're in.
All right, thank you. Help me to, like, the four tenure post. Regulations on major centers, just to balance some, Matt, Luke, for the custodial services. Congratulations to them as well. I'm sure you're doing a great job. Will Tom explain it to us, or will I write it? You're in the budget. Lisa, thank you so much for the presentation. I know you put a lot of time into it. It doesn't go unrecognizable, trust me. I know every time I open up the board docs, I may see something different, but it's, it's a lot of work. And I thank you and Tom for so telling me, getting it crunched to where we need it to be.
Thank you. It's sharing your knowledge with all this.
Yes, trust me, it doesn't go unnoticed, trust me, in a bit more. I know committee reports this evening, unfortunately, we're still waiting to get together, but all due time. So, nothing else.
I say three things. Congratulations to the tenure appointees and congratulations to the new custodians. Again, Lisa, Tom, thanks again for the hard work on a moving target budget and great presentation, Lisa. We, thanks, you know, very clear and understand revenues, expenditures. We see right where we are. We, we, all of the documents and we see all pages with hundreds and hundreds of pages and lines. It's just crazy how I keep up with all that. So, well done. Great presentation. That's all I have.
Yeah, we did have a finance meeting last night. We need monthly regardless of the time of year, but we do have the one evening meeting prior to the place. And, and basically the presentation and it's already discussed where, where the agenda consists of. So I won't repeat those. I will congratulate the teachers many fire as well, as you just saw on our budget. Now seventy, seventy-five percent of our, our, our forty-two million dollar budget is people. And we can't do without good folks. So, yeah, congratulations, part of those. And I guess the only couple little things I'll mention regarding the budget. And we're a forty-two million dollar business, so there are a lot of moving parts of pages and pages that Aaron said. We didn't know last night that these federal funds coming to the state are in the form of grant rates. So that, that provides a certain element of caution as we all know how our finding for grants and receiving them on a first-time basis has not happened in the past. So, you know, while we're happy they have, you know, been allocated, they have not been received. And I think the fine print on how that happened, it's still an element of caution we have to look at. Fortunately, we have a, our undesignated fund balance is strong. So we've got to work, manage that process at least in the, you know, the, I'll say intermediate term until we give more detail on how that happened. And the other thing I'll just mention, which is starting to show now and almost certainly impact us in the actual physical, this fully here that we have and then going forward in situation. Aaron knows what a cost of the two-by-four has done in the last couple of months. And while we are having this stimulus money that showed up, it does have a cause of effect. We're starting to see it in our economy. So our costs that we currently look at line items and then make minor adjustments, I just have it going forward. I think we're going to have to have to be mindful of that potential at least in the next few years. So that is just to throw an element of caution in that regard is as we, you know, as a boat, maybe here we start working on next year. But thank you for all the hard work, Lisa and Tom and the finance committee. It's, it's certainly always challenging, but it was ever much so this year, I think, even more moving parts than normal.
I join everyone, this is Ben's microphone, and congratulations to those getting tenure. Congratulations to. Congratulations to the custodial services, Matt Loop. I wanted to also say, I'm happy to see you subs on the list. And I'm going to use the word healthy in the figurative terms, is that we like to have a healthy pool of subs. And we encourage anyone interested to seek out Reggie and apply. And, you know, we're always looking for good subs, so that door is always open. And just thanks to Lisa and Tom and all the administrators who are working on the budget. I really appreciate the work that goes into the presentation because it does boil it down. There are so many lines hidden between the ten things listed and to boil it down to those categories. I know it's not easy to do. But I appreciate that you also put it online for anybody who wants to see it. So thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
All right. Can't say too much more about what everyone else said about the regulations to our new tenure. So, of course, the hard work for the budget. Business. If you want to stay on top of the team. So thank you for that. And I'm happy to say, I'm happy to see that we do have that they have started right now. So thank you for that. One day, we start a new period in our school district, where mostly everyone is taking it back in classrooms. And I'm excited for that. It'll be for a time since November. And our children will be back to school. I'm looking forward to that. I think they are too. Coming back home on Monday. I'm thanking everyone again for all the hard work. And then. I'll hire them all, so we continue.
Thank you. I'll echo the congratulations to everyone on the personnel memorandums. I also, I don't want to overlook the fact that we approved two new contracts tonight. You know, thank you to Tom and to both bargaining units for working things out and, you know, putting together, I think, plans that are reasonable for today or our district moving into the future. You know, I think these two contracts put us in a good position, so, you know, thank you to everyone involved in that. And, you know, we talked briefly about the Medicare plan that is being offered to the retirees. Lisa said last night in the meeting, there were actually some people who said that this plan that they moved to will save them money because they also pay for their spouse, and that their payment will go from $65 or to $65, from somewhere around $200. So, you know, we're happy to be able to offer that, and we're happy that, you know, we're hopeful that a lot of people will take advantage of that. It'll be a win-win for everyone. That is all that I had. So with that, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn to a technical session for the purposes of special education and personnel. Sorry.
All in favor?
Hi.
Vote. We are adjourned. Thank you.